Oh, okay. Okay. Vagabond, alright.
Yeah, he's too young to retire.
Anyway, and when he gets back, he may or may not be looking like they're gonna ship him off to tow truck for a while. So anyways, he's just kinda making some life adjustments.
Well, welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Nice to have you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've seen you around here. Alright. Congratulations. Alright, well, it looks like seven, so, welcome to the May meeting of the Conway Planning Commission. Thank you for coming. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public hearing items. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within thirty days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting. A public notice will also be placed on the city's website at www.cityofconway.org. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council as early as May 24th, 2016. First item we need to take care of is the minutes from the April meeting. Does anyone see anything that needs to be subtracted, corrected, or know of anything that should be added? Alright, I have a motion from Ann and a to approve and a second from, I mean, from Marilyn, a second from Ann. Alright, all in favor of approving the April minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That sounds unanimous. Alright. Now, before we start the public hearing, I wanna briefly sketch out the ground rules. First, we will ask for anyone who's in favor of the proposal to come forward and speak. The first speaker will have ten minutes and any follow-up speakers will have two minutes each. Then we'll do the same for anyone who is in opposition to each of these proposals. Ten minutes for the first speaker, two minutes for anyone else. The first item on the agenda tonight is the Alex Tyler request to rezone property located at 1301 McNutt Road from A1 Agricultural to I3 Intensive Industrial. Who would like to speak in favor of this?
Right.
Oh, you're right, yeah, and I even went there and drove all around and didn't even notice that. Good point. Yeah, it is Sturgis, yeah.
Mr. Tyler is, you know, is wanting to put in a auto body shop, auto repair, restoration place. Everything surrounding this is I3, there was a house there at one time. I mean, I think it's the area, it was, you know, it was in that area. I think everything would be, you know, they'll have to do site plan, so we'll go through site plan review. I think it's appropriate. Does that have, he had to off the property yet?
That's Mr. French.
Buying of the property is additional upon the rezoning and everything, so it would probably be, I mean, he got through site planning, all his planning. Hopefully, he'll be able to be in.
Would this be for automobiles or big trucks?
Automobiles. I would work on all of those too. There is an area in the back, he's gonna have a fenced-in area, and there would be kind of a storage area down in the back. As far as if their wing can be repaired and stuff.
There could be visible from the road?
There'll be a fence, you know, they do have plans for a fence, now they haven't, that would be, you know, fences to keep the seat through, at this time it'll probably just be in most industrial area like that, it would probably just be a chain link fence. But, I mean, we're willing to cover that, there would be some landscaping in the front, some trees on.
They still have those cars?
It would be in some tents, the others that would be in storage would be fenced in a some of them, you know, that he's working on would be locked inside the building. Cameras and stuff like that also.
Any other questions for Mr. French?
Well, my only concern is that we, I mean, I don't have any issue with the location or the use of the land, just that we make sure that whatever we do, there's visibility there. I mean, this, this road, while it's approved for industrial, it's becoming increasingly used for pedestrians during the day, right? So, a lot of bikers and runners up and down that road from Maxim HP and all those places over in Technology Park, so, and while that shouldn't limit his business, I think we need to keep, we should admonish them to keep that in mind when they're constructing their site plan so that, you know, and put something too close to the road to block the traffic so that you can get in and out and just keep the pedestrians in minds, I guess, is where I'm going with that.
Yeah, more than I've got planned right now is it's gonna be about
Okay.
You know, and it's a normal site plan review, I mean, they'll have to do.
So, will this come back to board us during site review?
No, there'll be a, or site plan development review. It can be a Melville, it's not a free area, but we have a thing called the image zone. As if it were in a C3.
Fifty percent brick, all that?
Brick, all that stuff, just as you know. Front gets dressed up, but in industrial area, we lay out the back to be basically for vehicles, all that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. French?
Hours of operation is, I'm sorry, is it gonna be just standard hours, business hours?
Yeah, you know, you know, they would working, they're working on a industrial area, so I would think, you know, they'd like to be able to work late. And if you have a tow truck or something, they have to go get somebody, bring it, bring it back, you know, late at night. Somebody breaks down, they have to go get the vehicle and bring it to them.
Any, anything else for Mr. French? Alright, thank you, sir. Oh, and one thing I forgot to mention, and Mr. French did this, is please state your name and address, anyone who comes up to address the commission. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? Seeing none, I'll bring this issue into committee. What are your thoughts? Okay, we got a motion from Brian to approve, okay, second, I believe, Matthew, so, all in favor of approving this rezoning request from May 1 to I3, please say aye. And I vote with the ayes, is anyone opposed or any abstentions? Hey, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda concerns the same property, but for a different purpose. It's the conditional use permit request to allow a paint and auto body and repair shop in an I3 zoning district. So, we've now approved the rezoning from agricultural to industrial, but now we got to consider the conditional use permit. So, who would like to speak in favor of this?
My name, Bobby French, my office at 1021 Prince Street.
Any questions for Mr. French?
Assuming, assuming he's gonna have all the proper safety things going on to paint, paints and all that stuff, he's gonna have all that.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. French. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, I'll bring it into committee. We have a motion to approve it from Brian and a second from Ann, all in favor, please say aye. And I vote with the ayes, anyone opposed, any abstentions? Hey, that also passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item is the BBG Crystal Ely and Barbara manual conditional use permit request to allow an adult daycare center in a C3 zoning district at 2850 Prince Street, Suites 18 and 19, which is in the Salem Center Shopping Center. Who would like to speak in favor of this? Alright.
Hi, I'm Crystal Ely. We're gonna open up a daycare on Prince Street. Basically, we wanna just give like the caregivers the day, just to have free time on their own, basically.
Ms. Ely, and also for the record, would you please state your address?
At 4615 Utah Trail?
No, oh, my address.
Yes, yeah.
They throw out the property, 4615 Utah Trail.
Okay, alright.
And what do you mean by give them a break, what do you, what do you?
Like, as, you know, when they go to work or whatever they have to do, we, just, if they have their parent or whoever they have, then we, you know, take care of that, you know, watch them for them and whatever they need done.
She's saying give their caregiver a break.
Okay, thank you, from dementia patients and stuff, all the way to of all ages.
Right now.
Okay.
You have to do this before you secure state permits and so forth, yes ma'am? And how many, how many residents, clients do you?
Um, from 5:00 AM to, I mean, 6:00 AM to 5:00 P.M. Um, and we, we try to do a rest that as well, so it's like, one of the caregivers have to go out of town, then we'll, we'll be if it's a respite, it will be.
Can you tell me how this is gonna be staffed? What kind of staff are you gonna have, you're gonna have nursing staff, are you gonna have?
Yes ma'am, we have, we have a nurse home call, we have some CNAs, and my sister and I and her husband, we've been, they had a group home before, they've been in this field for fifteen years.
Any other questions for Ms. Ely?
Okay, so, if this is also going to be a respite care center, then it would take care of people overnight, which would involve you don't, you don't have any of that in thing, you're waiting until
Beds would you have? Beds?
Uh, we, it's only required that we have one bed, like a five room or four, um, like, but if we have respite, we have, depending on that we have, we only have one right now.
It stays all the time?
No, we don't have any right now, I'm talking about, we have a five room that we have for one, one day right now. We also own a transportation business, so we would like take them like, you know, alley and stuff like that.
Am I correct that if this is approved, the spots are gonna move into us, what's now that Barbara College?
Uh, it would just be a top corner place.
Okay. Yeah.
I know, working in nursing myself, a lot of patients with dementia and stuff like that, are y'all gonna have some sort of like security coded in and y'all have to go by all that as well?
Are there any other questions for Ms. Ely?
Well, my question about this particular facility is, in, in the use of this facility, will, is there a place outside that you're gonna be able to lease also that they can go, or was this strictly an inside facility here?
Uh, it's a big old out, the backyard is just like
Oh, so is that part of this, part of what you can use as well? Okay. Yeah, I didn't realize that, yeah.
Adult daycare doesn't have the same green space requirements and stuff as childhood.
Right, but I just wondered, she's, I mean, you know, they, they not gonna wanna stay inside either.
Yeah, you get cooped up like that.
I mean, some, some of them may, you know, still, you know, smoke or whatever, they go outside spit tobacco, I don't know what they do, but.
You do two-year-old.
Yeah, it's, it's the area out there a little.
Any other questions?
Did I understand you said you've been in this business for many years?
I've been taking, I used to work at Conway Human Development Center, so I know, know all about taking care of, you know, clients and all that. And that, my sister and I had a group home, and they stayed in North Carolina, so they, they
Any other questions for Ms. Ely? Do you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit request?
I'm Barbara, um, site 46, um, 4615 Utah Trail. I, I noticed that on the pamphlet, it showed that the, where the building is gonna be, is on the corner of the building that's facing the road, but it's not that one, it's the one, the building facing, okay, the one that's facing the road, and then there's one that's right next to it, it's the one on that corner.
Hmm, okay.
Not the top corner, I mean, not the other one that you was talking about.
Right.
It's the other one.
Okay.
It's in the very back.
Okay.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the back for
It's like behind that corner, one of that car in this back, yeah.
Okay.
It's off the road.
And we're not necessarily gonna provide respite, we're thinking about providing respite, but we, we really won't know anything until we get our, get the zoning permit. It's all in the air, you know, until we figure out, you know, if we get the zone.
Yeah, 'cause y'all gotta go through a whole lot of other stuff for this.
Y'all don't get the respite, so you'll still be able to open and operate, you know, if you don't get approval for the respite care?
And at that time, would you work past hours, just not having a night care?
Um, only if we, if we don't, if we don't provide respite, we won't work past just five o'clock. Uh, we will, you know, if, if people are late picking up their loved ones, you know, of course, we will, but
Any other questions for Ms. Manuel? Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, I'll bring this into committee. What are your thoughts?
I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I am concerned about this respite care and the overnight, the idea of people being overnight in a shopping center. Bother me.
Is that twenty-four hours?
Gas station?
Yeah.
I think the gas station is, I know it's open late. And early.
A much-needed service for the community, very much, with the older adults coming along and a lot of early dementia. I mean, you're seeing a lot more civil alerts going out because people can't take care of their parents and so forth and so on, especially during the day when they're already working. And with the security in place, if they do have the, like, like in nursing homes where you have to enter a keypad to get in and out, if they do have the security in place, I think it'd be a great, a great service for the community.
Yeah, I agree, it's needed, I mean, and if they can establish a business here, then maybe they could move it somewhere else, you know, once they, once they establish it, but I get that they can't jump into building a facility until, you know, the need is warranted, or they can justify the, you know, an established business, but I agree with, I agree that, you know, that the need certainly would present itself.
We could, we could, whoever wants to make a motion could stipulate conditions, too, you're, you're free to add conditions.
That, that, I mean, it's a perfect little spot, it's kinda dead back there, nobody ever drives around there, there's not a lot of traffic through there. All the other little shops that tried to make it in there never made it. The only thing is that other end, on the other side of Quiznos, closer to the roundabout, that have really even been able to make it because of the visibility, and they're all gone at five o'clock. So, I don't even have a problem with the respite because there's no, there's a ghost town after five o'clock over there, other than people coming into that little gas station and, you know, maybe the restaurant until an eight or so. So, I don't have a problem with either one of it, and, and it's just kind of a dead place where, you know, it's just gonna get dilapidated if we don't put something in there or somebody's taking care of it. Unless somebody else has got something to say, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Without conditions?
I don't, I don't, unless there's something that the staff recommended, I don't
No, no, there aren't any.
Then I don't have a problem.
Let me, let me get to the applicant.
I think that's a great idea, I mean, you know, but I think the guy who's leasing the building is, you know, working on that building, he's not gonna let somebody just come in and take over without anything, but, yeah, that's fine, if y'all wanna make it, the applicant, we do that pretty traditionally around here, so.
Okay, alright, we have a motion to approve from Brian with the condition that the approval be limited to this applicant. Is there a second to the motion?
I have a second.
Alright, a second from Wendy. Is there any discussion of the motion before we vote?
Just limited to this person like that, they can't just sell this business to somebody else without coming back to us.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Is anyone opposed? Okay, we haven't, why, is anyone, does anyone abstain? I vote with the ayes, so this passes by a vote of eight to one. Great, thank you. Hey, the final item on the agenda is the Melvin Gonzalez request to rezone property located at 1718 College Avenue from R2A to R2. R2A, for those who may not be aware, is large lot duplex, R2 is small lot duplex. So, who would like to speak in favor of this?
So, really, the only reason you're here is because you can't put a duplex on this unless we rezone it to that because there's only ninety-three feet of frontage instead of a hundred. So, you're seven feet shy of what you need to just not even come before us and knock this building down and build a duplex like they want. So, we're talking about seven feet here, right, is the only problem?
If it's seven feet, they could build a duplex, that'd have a chance with length issues.
Right.
Only if it required one hundred feet, it's you're shy of that now, nine or two.
And you're taking down a dilapidated building and putting a nice new one in. Are you gonna live there, Melvin?
No, no.
Okay.
Does it cost more though?
Right.
Does this have to go through the historic history?
Are there any other questions for Mr. Keith? Alright, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning request?
How long we change, but?
Are there any questions for Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir, do, what square footage will each duplex be?
Uh, that's a good question.
You don't have a plan yet for?
We don't have a plan because of it.
My concern is parking, that seems to be the general concern with duplexes in the old Conway area because a lot of the lots are, are deep, but they're not extremely wide, and so, I guess that was my question. Do you, do you have an idea in mind, and how do you intend to address the parking?
I'm thinking even to have a car garage for each unit, so.
A garage or carport or?
Uh, a garage or a carport, so.
A corner, cover your park, is it?
Exactly, so, yeah, because it's, it's in a really nice area, so, you know, I'm trying to do it right, so, my property looks good. That all's gonna be yard on each side, it's gonna be two drawers, one to eat. So, I don't think the, the, the parking won't be, I thought about that, so, uh, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's gonna be about, you know, eight hundred. That's kinda, you know, what we're thinking.
Okay.
So that's gonna be a matter of...
One bedroom, two bedrooms?
Um, probably three bedrooms, um, you know, we don't know...
For each unit?
For each unit, we, we don't know. Uh, it's more likely two, you know, uh, two to five and two... Um, there's gonna be more question for the guy that's gonna draw the plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I was just saying, uh, in your, in your vision right now, will you work in this tree that's here? Or you're gonna have to move some of the, some of the trees that are...
Um, trees are very small. We don't have a big tree tree. They're bushes pretty much, so we don't have that. We are taking down all the buildings. We've got permits from the city to draw them down. You know, we've got, that's pretty much what we're...
Anyone else with a question for Mr. Gonzalez? All right, thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request?
I, I do, I have a question.
All right, or please come here, sir, and give us your name and address, and then we'll be glad to take your question.
My name is Jay Witt. About twenty-four days.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, now, already brought the apartment? Have a survey? Uh, and survey?
Um, no, we haven't, no. We are taking the house down.
Oh, yeah, I know, there's a worth, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's not worth, but I mean, uh, on your north side.
Yes, sir.
You know, there's a problem there with the... Four feet eight inches, over on that. If you... Uh, we could, uh, in, and, hey. It's visible. You, you feel that sitting back there? Uh, you know, on the east side, back to the... Back to the...
If you would, Mr. Witt, uh, speak close to the microphone because the, uh, tr- transcript is made, the meeting is recorded and... But feel free to ask him, you know, ask questions.
Yes, well, I bought this property, uh, three years ago, and we had a real problem with the, uh... survey, being that the survey was done so many years ago that, yeah, actually with the, uh, new GPS and all, the block is actually six feet shorter than it should. I mean, if you run the tape on it. But anyway, uh, what it is, is there's a wooden privacy fence, and it's, uh, four feet eight inches. And what I wanted to do is get this taken care of. So if I decide to sell my place or whatever, there will be no problem with the, uh... If someone wants to borrow money to buy it or something like that, where there wouldn't be a, uh, problem.
Right. This, uh, right, what you're, what, the issue you're raising is legitimate, but it's not, uh, it doesn't really pertain to what we're dealing with right now. We're just dealing with the conditional use, I mean, the rezoning request from R two A to R two. Do you have any comments directed at that, at that issue?
I understand that buildings and old buildings, it's free, but it's not worth putting back.
Yes, sir.
Which is, would cost too much, but I do wanna get this cleared up. Why wouldn't this be a part of, of, uh... This whole process we're doing now? It's gonna have to be addressed.
Right. That's not an issue that we're gonna be taking up here tonight, though. We're just dealing with the question of whether to rezone this from R two A to R two. That's a separate issue for a, a separate time to take up with the city.
Well, I, excuse me just a moment. Are you saying that part of your property?
His fence.
His, his, that the fence, his fence is fencing in part of your property?
Yes.
So that it, I, it may, it may, it may very well have to do with this if the rezoning request includes part of his property? That is something that needs to be resolved.
Well, that would be a surveying issue, wouldn't it?
No, what I'm saying, we, we don't need to rezone part of his property.
We're not rezoning part of his property. The property line is the property line. We have no jurisdiction over where the property line is or isn't. We're just deciding on what actually is Melvin's to rezone that.
Right, right. It's up to...
We don't set property lines.
We don't set property rules.
I don't know who needs to go see.
Actually draw up the, the, uh, rezoning, I mean, when that's all done and Jason puts it in the map, we'll follow where that, that, that's when they're sitting here to...
Property line is.
And if we need to make a discovery as far as maybe something's off a little bit out there, we're gonna buy the accessory records with our map. So, um, the best thing to do is to, um... Ever and share a copy of what you have with us, and we can double-check that with the accessory's office and so forth. Properly. Property line, if Brian points out, we're gonna go...
Reported?
Yeah.
What do you mean? What did you say? The fence?
I mean, the property fence could be very well be off. I mean, we, I, I don't know all the facts, but that happens a lot, I mean...
Oh, yeah.
So wherever the reported property line is on E D somewhere is what...
Yes, well, I do have that.
Okay.
You know, wherever the fence is, really kinda irrelevant, really more is to do with... I mean, what I'm saying is if your property is encompassed by a fence, the fence should go away, basically. It needs to follow the property line. Have some D's.
Yes, sir.
So we can work with that as part of permitting process and so...
Yeah.
It's nice to be questioned whether to...
Yeah, well...
Then what did you suggest, uh, do?
Um, come up to the plan tomorrow, the planning department tomorrow, whenever it's convenient to, and then we can get a talk, have information on us, and then we can...
All right.
Well, as we all know, Old, that, Old Conway is a mess in a survey.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, thank you, man. Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a common, this is a common issue in Old Conway. Uh, blocks are shorted by six, ten feet. We've had this come up several times. The best thing to do is gonna be, uh, probably find a surveyor to place pins using the... That would, that would just save you guys in the long run, that would save Mr. Witt in the long run. We'll just have a surveyor come out and place pins where by the D, and that's using the, the new GPS versus the old. Most of these lots are from the nineteen twenties and thirties, uh, surveys, so there is...
Hey, Melvin, is part of your plan in demolishing the house to take down that fence? Or not?
I wasn't aware of this.
Right.
But we're gonna have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna have, yeah, my plan was gonna...
Okay.
Pretty much replacing the old because I didn't know about this.
Right.
Now, you know, we need to address this. We're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna be able to take care of, you know, this issue.
Good.
I'm willing to do it. That's no problem.
All right.
Okay, I just saw this, so I thought...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Witt. Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, let's, okay. Okay. Yeah. All right.
Well, it's where, he, yeah, the general area, so, yeah.
Yeah.
He, he's back the building, but, uh...
Okay. Yeah, well, thank, thank you, Mr. Witt. We need to move on with the next speaker. Uh, would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request? You would, okay, and, and also, I'm going to allow, I'm gonna consider you the first speaker in opposition, so I'm gonna allow you up to ten minutes for this, so please give us your name and address. Go ahead. You're, we're gonna start the opposition, uh, at this point in terms of time.
I'm Vivian Hoag. I live at seventeen twenty-three College Avenue. I'm, uh, sort of across from this property. I've lived, uh, that's been my house since, uh, over seventy years ago. And, uh, so I'm very familiar with the house. I love the historic people who were in it. Um, my neighborhood was mainly, uh, residences. We had, we had a duplex next door to us, um, that was built by Dr. Britton, and it is still there. There, but so many of our landlords surrounding us now are not quite so attentive as he is. Uh, no, the house has no value. We've, we've watched it go from something to nothing. Of course, the property, though, has value. Um, I am assuming that there's not gonna be just one building as I heard some... Glad to know that it would need to fit into that house. Is that correct? Um, we do want that. That's not done very often. Um, I'm concerned about carports, where people put carports. Uh, the, there is a problem with rentals in Old Conway. It seems like every time something does go down, it's duplexes that come up or our apartments. And, um, this, this is, we're trying to get in the historic district because of who we work and what, what we're trying to preserve. Uh, so until about twenty, twenty-five years ago, we were single-family residences, and that's why I would really love to see in there people that'll take care of their property. Most rentals do not do that. They don't, you know, they leave their trash bins out in front of the house. Um, they leave litter in the yard. They park in the yards, leave ruts. Uh, it's not pleasant for us to watch these homes have that happen to them. Um... What I wish is that there could be, there's only supposed to be four unrelated people to a unit, so there needs to be four parking places. And it's hard for me then to see how they, some carports are gonna help with that. Um, if, you wanna have a question, if you may? No?
So your concern is with just the, where the carports are gonna be and making sure that there's no more than four people for the units?
It's hard for me to see how a small set of duplexes or a small building on that property would, would be able to satisfy all of the needs that they would need and that we would like to see. Particularly with that particular, um... But I think it is something that... Over and over, as these houses are, are demolished, there will be more duplexes and, and more houses and so forth.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Hoag? All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak against this request?
Good evening. My name's Heather Martin. I own the property at seventeen seventeen and seventeen nineteen College Avenue, which is directly across the street from the house. And I don't really have a huge opposition, uh... But, uh, I don't like to see a single-family house in Old Town Conway go from a single-family into a duplex. Uh, but if that is the case, I would just like to really encourage all the open development to hike the parking because the parking is, uh...
All right, any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll bring it into committee. What are your thoughts?
Well, it concerns me the parking. I know we said that there would be a garage for each unit, but there would still need to be additional parking because I'm assuming that more than one person... Yes, I know over on the, the, the units over on, um, College Street, right, right, right there at the railroad path, they have garages, and then off to the side, there are several parking places so that people won't block the garages or park in front of the units. And, uh, I, I'm just wondering if that's something that, um, we ought to... Parking spaces.
Considering that he's gonna make them two to three u, two to three bedrooms, I'm gonna say there's gonna be more than one car there.
And, and the gentleman who was just up, uh, mentioned something about hiding the parking, that you're putting the, the parking around the back. So it won't be an eyesore there?
That's, gotta go through a much more strenuous thing than us. I mean, even the picture in the show out, the property to the south has a, you, cars parked in the yard.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't make him clean up all of this whole neighborhood in one house, you know, at a time and hold him to a different standard. I mean, he's knocking down something that's old and dilapidated and putting something nice back. He's seven feet shy of even not even being in this room. The Historic Commission is gonna take care of the issues and make it look nice, make it look like something that belongs there, just like everything scattered all over this place, uh, within blocks. You can go find stuff a lot worse, and it's gonna be something nice, new, and somebody pumping money into this area is a good thing. So, I, I just don't see why we would beat him up and require him to do anything more than what is typical of the historic district and what fits this area.
Well, I wouldn't exactly call it beating him up. I don't think this is necessarily a pretty sight, getting cars parking on the, on the lawn and putting up a structure where you know you're not going to have enough parking at the outset when you have the option of doing something different. Why would you perpetuate something?
You don't know that that option will cost him more money, is my point, and that is holding him to a different standard than what you hold everybody else to. If you make him take driveways all the way around the back of the house and, and pour additional concrete back there, that's gonna cost this man additional money that it doesn't cost everybody else who's developed in there in the last ten years.
I don't see any problem with the, if he's, if he's willing to put garages or carports on either side, I, I don't see any problem. Most of the, most of the houses in Conway have garages that face the streets in, in really, really nice neighborhoods. I, you know, I mean...
Well, I, I agree. A lot of people who, who have garages, they park on the driveway.
It drives me crazy, but...
All I'm saying is this is going to be rental property, and there'll probably be at least two drivers to each unit, and you're putting, and he's going to put up a building, and it's going to start off with less parking than is needed. Yeah, but, but, you know what? I guess the Historical Commission, they'll, they will take a look at that and, uh, make some decisions about it, and, uh, as, as, as to whether or not, or how much money is it, this is going to cost him. You know, that's beyond our purview.
Start off with less than is needed, um...
Well, it, we've got one garage for each unit, and you maybe will have two...
Well, no, what I'm saying, I'm not saying that. I mean...
They haven't...
The carport, I mean, we don't know how wide he's gonna make these driveways.
He don't have a plan yet.
We don't. We could ask him, but...
Well, he doesn't have a plan yet.
But I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that...
He doesn't have a plan yet.
That's probably not something that we should be overly concerned about, but, um...
I mean, I went, Brian, if, if the man has seven more feet of property, he wouldn't have to build no garages. He could just put a duplex there, and there wouldn't be anything we could do about it. It would just be put up a duplex, and he could put it, make a mall park out in the yard. So if he's willing to do anything above that, then, and again, I think the Historic District's gonna take care of a lot of that. But, uh, all he's asking us for is to help him improve the property, uh, in that area 'cause he bought this property, the house there, everybody here, and his agreement that is, needs to go. So he's trying to put something back on there that can be profitable for him and help improve the area. And I think that's what he's here to ask us help for, and I don't see an issue with what he's asked us for.
Um, sentence in here is this oversight of the H D C, H D C should result in a duplex structure and a parking appropriate for the neighborhood. So based upon that, I make a motion to...
Hey, we have a motion for man to approve this request. Is there a second? Second from Del... Second from Delencia. Is there any discussion of the motion before we vote? Or any questions? Hey, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Or any abstentions? And I vote with the ayes, so that passes nine to zero. Is there any other business that, uh, any member of the commission would like to bring up? None? Okay, is.
Mr. Chairman, there may be no further questions. I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second from Delencia, and all in favor, please say aye. That sounds unanimous to me.
Now, it's not on the record, but y'all will be able to catch a plane for the championship on Friday at Baum Stadium. It's a big deal. Trust me, it's big.
Man, I read the article on the last game. That was so.
Three days of nail-biting baseball, is what it was. All three games within one run.
Yeah, crazy.
We, we played eleven innings Saturday.
Wow.
And we normally play seven, so.
I saw an article in Log Cabin about that, yeah.
I'm just telling y'all, it's a big deal. Make a big deal of it.